Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Would everyone please stand, place the flag, and join us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we approve the agenda, I have four additions that we need to add. And we'll just sequentially take them down the line as eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. The first one is, I'll just put down personnel. Now, we better leave it down. Now, the second one is U.S. Solar. You can just put agreement down there. Third one is Cannon Falls School District.
Subscriver, that's for solar.
Okay.
Again. There's two different solar type of agreements.
The last one is consideration to approve the Facility Committee Recommendation. So you can just put Facility Committee Recommendation, we'll talk more about it. With those additions, unless anybody has something else they would like to add, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda with amendment.
My question.
Thank you, Brenda. Second by Katie. Out of discussion, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Excuse me, Mike won't be here this evening, a prior conflict kept him out, so, just so you know, he will not be here. Scheduled presenters, we have none. Reports in communication, we have an attachment for the Facility Committee. Do we want to deal with that now, or should we place it down the file a little bit? We can do either one.
It's up to you guys. The Facility Committee met on August first, and as far as they reviewed the last meeting which had occurred, and then there was a few agenda items with senior center discussion usage hours, and at this time, the committee is recommending no rent, and Jake will provide the senior center with structure, the building usage and policies in writing. The fieldhouse repairs, that's pretty small, isn't it? We talked about the fieldhouse repairs, and they proceed to get repairs done to secure the building further from the fieldhouse side of the building. Currently, the doors are broken and the building is not secured, hoping to complete before the start of school on nine three nineteen. There was football field conversations. Currently, at this point, the football field conversations will be not proceeding due to budget constraints. And then scheduling deadline as far as facility rental purchases for the sake of communication, Jake was asked to communicate with staff, coaches, and community members that the deadline for all scheduled events is Friday at noon, so that we have time to prepare for those rentals for the following week. And the communication will go out multiple times throughout the year to ensure its success.
Will we have, will community folks and such have an opportunity to put something on the schedule, or once Friday hits, that's it?
That's it. Yep, that's what the recommendation from the Facility Committee is, is to, it's not on the schedule by Friday at noon, you have to wait till the next week.
Just as an outsider, it seems kind of harsh. There must be opportunities for people, if we have a facility use, that they could somehow get into the school.
Yep, that's, you know, they can, the fieldhouse is open, if they want to come in and shoot around and stuff like that, that you can certainly come do that, but as far as like scheduled practice, or a class, or a camp, or anything like that, what the committee wanted to do was, noon on Fridays.
I think that's probably, I mean, most things have to be planned out, because it's just for the week.
For the next week, yeah.
The next week.
Yeah.
Because most, most things like that need to be planned out, like a birthday party, or you're going to have more than like a week's notice.
A lot of it is for the communication with our facility staffs to make sure that they are set up properly, because if something comes in on a Sunday that they want scheduled for Monday, it's awfully hard to communicate out their needs to the facility staff. And so we're just asking for them to plan out a little bit in advance, so that we can help meet their needs.
Sure.
And I think if it's communicated that that's the policy.
Then it'll, it might take a couple, a couple, a couple hiccups to get there, to get that out, and, but if that's the known policy, it should be fine.
Okay. Any other committee reports? Anybody?
Actually, I have a question about something on the facilities report, where the facilities decided to have no rent at this time for senior center. I thought we discussed that at our June meeting, that we were going to charge rent, and we had given the agreement back to the facilities committee to update the language, and we had decided that we weren't going to retroactively charge rent, that it would start on July first. So I'm just wondering what the conversation was.
I think you'll see the conversation later in, on number four, on that extra, we'll put in, one of the extra four.
Oh, okay.
So, open for discussion at that time.
Must be something we're voting on later.
I think the original conversation might have been in March.
It was, the original vote was in March, but then they came back and the senior center had to.
I know what you're talking about, yeah.
And it was just, basically seemed like it was just a paperwork issue, but then, I guess I was just kind of surprised to see that it was a no going forward.
We'll, we'll get more in depth on it, I think it deserves conversation for sure.
Okay.
Okay, any other committee meetings?
Transportation Committee is meeting tomorrow at ten thirty to discuss start of school, and they had some questions come in from some parents regarding routes and concerns, so we're just going to meet to discuss those and look at the upcoming school year. And we checked, we met last week, and we are actually having MSBA review our bylaws, because they haven't been looked at since two thousand and three. So just, they've been added and updated, but just making sure that everything's still in line, and we are looking at whether or not we're going to keep using Canyon Wanamango as the host site, and having their superintendent be the supervising superintendent, or if that's going to go through a rotation. We're getting the bylaws in mind first, before we make any decisions as far as that goes.
How many schools, how long do we tag?
Five.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Moving down, Admin Board Reports. Administrative Board Reports. Elementary school, I don't see Jen. We have attachments for all of them. Tim, middle school, high school, anything you'd like to comment?
Just thank you to all the staff that worked hard to get the building ready over the summer. It's always a great challenge, and they always do a fabulous job, so thank you to Dave and the staff, and thanks to Amy for all the work, and maybe sometime we'll be able to go around and take a look at the new furniture that the Ed Foundation graciously donated.
Tech, Amy?
Yes, Brenda. But really, this summer again, and I'm really happy to report that in my third, this, in my third year, beginning my fourth, we are nearly updated when it comes to classroom technology. Nearly every computer's been updated, we've made, you know, wise investments, I think. We've been pretty efficient in how we've targeted the money. One of the biggest challenges I've had over the last year and a half is how to replace the smart boards, what do we do that with, and I think we got a good device, we got really good professional development. Not today, but a week ago, somebody flew in from Denver who worked with our staff and are getting them trained on how to use that, and that will be an ongoing thing, and I'm very excited about that, because they're willing to work with us, they're also willing to respond to our needs, and I think update software, even things like that, based off of what kind of feedback they're getting from staff, so that's been really awesome. And I'm very grateful to Sandy Sheridan, Dorothy O'Reilly, and even the office staff who have come in and kind of helped out here. As you're probably well aware, we handed out devices last Wednesday, on the twenty-first, for the first time, with that picture day night, picking up your schedule, picking up devices, and of the six hundred and thirty-some plus devices, over four hundred and thirty kids showed up, four hundred and fifty kids showed up, so that's pretty amazing that we, on a brand-new kind of night, we got rid of about seventy percent of our devices. So we're hoping that Wednesday, that means that the rest of them go out, maybe a few stragglers, maybe the first days of school, and that's pretty amazing, because it wasn't that long ago, in fact, my first year, it was two weeks before we got devices in the hands of kids, and now they're going to be in their hands on the first day of school, so that's really been, been awesome, so. And I just kind of wanted to point in your direction again, the tech plan is posted out on the website, and I encourage you to look at that and kind of see where we're going, and kind of some of the things that we have in mind over the next couple of years, but we've done some great things, and again, I'm also very grateful to Dave and his staff and the furniture, and from the Ed Foundation, is going to really top things off, and I'm hoping that we can showcase that in a future board meeting, that would be a great little trip to take, to take around the district, so.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Community Ed and Activities.
Just a couple of things real quick, preschool numbers look great, our classes are full. We got four full-day classrooms, our full-day programs really taken off in the last handful of years. Well, since I started ten years ago, we had one full-day classroom, now we have four full-day classrooms, and the half-day kids are just kind of mixed in there, so the full-day class has become super popular, and the half-day classes, the numbers have kind of gone down a little bit, so I think we're just trading one for the other, so. Classes are full, which is great, we got a few kids on the waiting list as well, which we always do our best to fit those kids in somewhere, but we do have class size limits as well, that we stick to, so. They do a great job down there in preschool, so I'm really happy to see that. Activities, obviously fall sports are well underway, and if you're looking for something to do tomorrow, volleyball's at home, and boys soccer's at home, so there's some things going on tomorrow night. Registration numbers look good, overall numbers, I think, are down about fifteen from last year, but nobody's down anything that's alarmed, it's just one or two here in the sport, a couple of them are up, but, and the other thing is, congratulations, Bucky Lindell was inducted to the Minnesota Baseball Coaches Association Hall thing, and he was honored at the Twins game the other day, so.
Thank you. Operations, Dave had a brief handout, that's included on there, three or four items that he was pointing out too. Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Just a couple of things to call you to your attention, and some of them are coming up later with the additional items. Josh and I met with U.S. Solar recently to discuss an opportunity for the district to be a part of another solar garden, which they had as met. Well, there's, there's information for two items here from U.S. Solar, one of them, we'll start with the other one, since that one popped up first, is the, an agreement that we need to sign for our second solar garden that was approved here in the district, I believe, last year. And this is more financial related, for them to get financing, saying basically that they have a partnership with us, and so we do need to approve this tonight, and we'll have Katie sign off at the end of the, of the meeting tonight, but it's an estoppel agreement, we had to do a lot of research on what the word estoppel means, but basically there's an agreement between the company, and we're acting as kind of a third party in that agreement, and so we'll need to sign off that we do have an agreement that was passed last year with them, as they complete their financing piece to this solar garden. The other agreement is for, can't get it pulled up here, it's the estoppel. The proposal that they are having us take a look at, for us to be a part of, is for a third solar garden to increase our savings over a twenty-five-year, twenty-five-year period, and it'll look similar to other agreements, with us getting a certain percentage of savings each year as we go through the production months, as you will see, it looks similar to what you have signed on to in the past. And so it'd be the same tiered subscription rate as we did for the last solar garden. And so they wanted to offer us first, as we have a previous agreement with this company, and if we choose not to do it, there is no cost to the district to join this third agreement and get more savings, and so if we choose not to, for whatever reason, then they would move on to another school district or public entity to take part in the solar garden, but we were, since we had a previous agreement, they offered it to us first. This is more of the financial analysis for this third garden. As you can see, it ramps up over the years. So the print-off may be a little bit easier to see. But as you can see, it's similar to the other two agreements that you have signed on to in the past. This is more informational tonight than the actual agreement, the actual agreement is still being drawn up on their end, and so if you choose to move forward tonight on this, we can certainly do that, if you choose to wait until September, until you see the actual agreement, we can certainly do that as well, but they are giving us through the September board meeting to make a decision on that, so. That is the reason for the addition of the agenda tonight, for that solar garden agreement. The other item, as far as the solar garden is concerned, is a comparison between the three agreements and the savings that you have. So with the addition of a third solar garden over the twenty-five-year period, you would be saving just over two million dollars, is the bottom line of that. Currently, with two solar gardens, you're looking at about one point six million dollar savings.
I never understand, conceptually, what the solar garden is, it's an off-site, off-site panels, and we're somehow taking part, we, we talked about.
Yes.
Solar panels by the elementary school, and the decision about a year and a half ago, maybe a couple of years ago, had more to do with the panels kind of being disruptive to our facility, you know, you, you give up land now and forever if you put panels in there. What is the solar garden, are you familiar?
You're right, it's, it's, it's an off-site piece of land that they put up, companies invest in these solar gardens, and then Excel Energy buys the product from them, I guess is the best way to put it, and then we are the third-party vendor that is the beneficiary of those savings. But there's no cost to us?
Nope, there's no cost to us.
Seems like a pretty good deal. I was thinking, no cost, and we can have savings over that amount of time, is a very good deal for the district. That's good for the environment.
Right, right. I don't know if there's anything missing that you want to add.
Not so much missing, but maybe just kind of pull it all together. So, you know, the question that you always ask, is it too good to be true, and that's exactly the question I had asked from right here, and it. So essentially, they can buy so much land or capacity for solar energy. Excel's under obligation federally to buy so much solar energy, so when it first came out, there was a larger percentage, I think it was called the applicable retail rate, those gardens actually give a better return, and that's what this one is, it opened up, they had some space where, they had more capacity to put on this program, and it's more desirable by public entities, because they can earn a better return for credit. No cost upfront for us, the only cost we have is, we actually, we'll see, you'll see bills to SSI Trade, which is the finance company, it doesn't actually get paid to U.S. Solar, but there's a payment to U.S. Solar for the monthly cost of electricity, which is offset by what they sell to Excel, so on our Excel bill for that month, you'll see a big credit. So we've been now, the first garden is online for the past three months, and we've been on target with what they've projected for savings on that, we've got about twenty-five hundred dollars in savings over the three months from the one garden. The second one will be coming online, they hope, by December, you'll start to see that savings each month on that, so you'll, in addition to it, and if we decide to go with the third garden, you'd see in addition to that. They project up to two point, just under two point one million dollars over twenty-five years, which would, if their projections were to be right, about eighty-two thousand dollars a year, and stuff that we really don't have to do, other than, we're going to buy electricity anyway, we're just doing it through U.S. Solar. Now, the projections are obviously based on a sliding scale increase from Excel, as Excel's energy rates increase, presumably we'd be paying more to Excel, but since they're offsetting that with their credit, that's where the, you'll see the savings increase over the years. So whether or not that, you know, twenty-five years is pretty hard to project, but either way, whoever it is, it's a savings to us that we're not having a cost for. Real bad, they have to sell so much of it, so because we're a public entity, they can sell up to forty percent of that garden to a public entity, so we'd be purchasing essentially forty percent of that solar garden's energy from them. It is desirable from other school districts, you know, we're fortunate they came to us first, because we had a prior agreement with them, and they knew that we had more capacity than what they were able to provide it the first time through with those two gardens, so they asked if we wanted to be considered for the third, I thought that was a pretty nice gesture. So they're giving us essentially until the September board, before they would go out and search for another partner for them for that forty percent, if that kind of feels in my contract.
So I had a question on the subscription size, the first one's eight hundred and fifty-five thousand kilowatt, the second one's the same, and then it drops down?
We only have so much capacity, so when they went for that third one, so we still had energy that we could offset with the solar garden, so, but they got most of it combined in those first two agreements. So you'll see, that's why the amount left over, or balance, I guess, that we have available to purchase from them, has decreased for that third, third go-around. I know for quite a while, the comment always had been, when vendors would come in and ask about solar, we're at our capacity, we can't buy anymore, which we were at, but since this garden has opened up, and it's opened up an opportunity for us to go and get the rest of that capacity, we have an opportunity to go on a third subscription for the district, so, you know, it's not going to a point where we are making money off electricity, but in general, depending on the rates and the usage, how high it gets if you're from the air conditioning, climate, or the chillers as they are, how much, you know, we're charging iPhones, devices, and that kind of stuff, electricity goes up, you could be looking at between two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in electricity that we're paying out, so be able to offset it by eighty thousand dollars is a nice opportunity for us.
So is there any possibility of us not using all of these kilowatt hours?
I don't think so, I don't think that they would want to do that, because they're, they want to sell everything to Excel, so when they put out these plans, they want to make sure that they're going to be able to meet capacity, so they're, if anything, I would think that they would probably estimate a little bit on the low side for our users, so that they can guarantee that they're going to sell everything to Excel, and be able to charge it all back to us, the part that we use.
Yeah, because as we're changing the bulbs and things like that, we're trying to be a lot more efficient.
And that's a good point, too, because when you came in with the UNESCO project, the LTFM project, a lot of things got much more efficient, we could see it in our electricity bills. Their estimates are based on after that project was done, yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on, from the solar side? My second report item is on a memorial tree garden that was brought to my attention right when I arrived here in July by a family, the McGales family, who wished to donate a tree garden, educational tree garden, to the district in memory of their son, who has recently passed away, and I told them that, I think with such an undertaking, it's a great idea, but I would want to get some more stakeholders involved in the district, ranging from, from staff that would use it, to administration, and even board members, if you wish to join us in some of these meetings, to get enough ideas to put together a proposal to bring back to the board, hopefully, probably at the earliest in October of this year, because we're not meeting until the middle of September, and I think we want to thoroughly take a look at this. There's a similar project that, that took place in Goodhue, so, at a school district, so I would think that we probably want to go down and take a look at that as well, and probably engage with the DNR and how to properly upkeep something, and so that'll be all in the proposal, if it's feasible, bring back to the board as early as October, and for your acceptance, if you guys would, at that point. So it's coming down the line here. Finally, Superintendent Goals, I've got a draft document here. Normally what happens is that Superintendent Goals are tied into strategic planning documents, and with us discussing strategic planning at this point, I don't know if it's real prudent to get my goals finalized yet for the year. Part of this are, these are very basic at this point, with performance goal number one, networking and communication with the Cannon Falls community, I think I've been out doing that over the summertime here, as I've gotten more and more involved. Item number two, updating of the Cannon Falls area school district strategic plan, which we'll be hopefully discussing more in depth tonight. And finally, setting the desired fund balance percentage, and/or updating the policy of seven fourteen per person previous discussions. So this is kind of a framework at this point, and draft status, probably give you an update on that, and I think it's probably more prudent to set that after some more strategic planning, because, you know, we're aligning my goals to this, so. Other than that, that is all I have for report items, and if you have questions.
Okay, moving on, thank you, Jeff. Public input, does anyone have any concerns, questions, statements they'd like to share with the district pertaining to anything school district related? We are moving on. Finance report, John?
Yeah, so, this one's all short and sweet, because we've had a lot of finance work with the auditors in the building, they have completed their onsite portion of their audit, and are getting real close to being able to put together a draft for us. I've still got a few things to clean up, based on turnaround reports, UFRs, and the state to make sure things are matching, but we're getting close to where we're going to be able to have a draft, which means the hope and the plan is to have the audit presented at the September board meeting, to be finalized, so, quite a bit soon, about three months sooner than it was last time. Things have gone well, we don't know exactly where we're going to be, other than a couple of things, you'll see, there'll be talk about a resolution for the possibility of having transferred funds from the general fund to cover food service deficit that's later on in the, the agenda. There's still some movement that could happen there, but we see that there could be a negative balance in food service, and we'd rather not operate the food service at a negative balance, so if that were to happen, as we get towards the end of the audit, I need to make an adjustment, that resolution would then give us the authority to transfer some funds from the general fund to cover that, and it's recommended by the auditors that we do that in advance, just as a precaution, so we don't get to the point then that, to kind of hold up the, or delay the audit, because it'd be a resolution passed to do so. So just because we're that thin and that close, we just want to make sure we're ahead of the game on that. As far as the finance report's concerned, or what was presented, you're just going to have the cash flow analysis that goes through the mid-November. A few things to note on here, that were presented later on in the agenda, you'll see a couple of bus lease payments, it's kind of been the philosophy, recently of the transportation department to update and get new buses to release, you'll be looking to approve two tonight that were on the five-year plan and are ready to go, and the finances are all lined up, we just need to get the final approval on it, but, you know... But, you know, two buses could cost about a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, but when they're leased, you give them for thirty-five thousand for that year. That's going to be priced up in our transportation department. We, in our committee meetings, that we discuss a little bit on the philosophy going forward on that, purchase versus lease. But under the current system, that's kind of where we're at. So as you see, those, the eighteen thousand dollar payments are going off the bus lease. That's for a one bus lease. This one that you'll be looking at tonight with two buses is about, you know, twice that, thirty-six thousand dollars. For, and again, the leases that we do are not your typical lease where you turn at the end, at the end of five years, we own the buses. And then the other thing that's probably significant to look at for cash flow is, it's hard to believe we're already talking October, November, but the second half of the 2019 tax levy returns will be coming in at the end of November, or end of October, beginning of November. So those estimates are put in there as well. So as it looks, and with the whole fiscal year in the office, again, not having to do any cash flow borrowing, doesn't say that, you know, fund balance is fantastic, but it doesn't say that cash flow-wise, we're doing well enough to make our payments and meet our means on a day-to-day, week-operational level. So if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer what you have.
As we, as we lease these last two buses, or these present two buses, are we going to talk about that more in depth under number twelve? Or is that just a resolution to accept?
It's a resolution to accept the current leases.
So when we first started leasing, it was because we were fairly behind on our moving of buses. We had some pretty antiquated buses. Are we going to discuss philosophically whether we should be continuing to lease or to purchase in the future?
Yeah, and I think from conversations that Jeff and I have had, I think it was either, or both, transportation committee meetings or finance committee meetings, you know, what is the best way for us to go forward financially and departmentally, you know? Can we get a bus to go beyond what we're doing right now? In terms of what we have, buses and how we're leasing right now, we're thinking that bus will go about fifteen years. Depending on how we maintain and how we use them, you know, eighteen years might be more reasonable. And, you know, do we get down to a system where rather than having, you know, five lease payments, which essentially is equaling to purchasing a bus, we'd purchase a bus each year and just have it outright and go with that for it? So maybe a little bit of adjustment of philosophy, maybe just a little bit of discussion on what's best for us, departmentally for transportation and financially for the district.
Just to run through the transportation committee, they'll bring us back a recommendation, right? Okay, thank you. Anything for John? Motion to approve. Motion by Bill to approve the finance report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Anna. Other discussion? All in favor of the finance report approved will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any single item, it can be removed from the agenda for separate action. If you have a chance to review, if not, just take a minute to look things over. Thirty-five, thirty-six, something like that. Do you have pages for us? Anything for the cause? When you're ready, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion by Katie. Second.
Second.
Second by Bill. Further discussion? All in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. No old business under new business. Consideration to approve a medical leave.
Yes, we've got a request for a medical leave from Missy Robinson. We've got approval on. It's under FMLA.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Brenda.
Second.
Second by Katie. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve a school calendar change. Move the federal April eighth, one P M early release to the ninth.
If you take a look at the school calendar here, I'm going to try that light in this now that I figured that out. April tenth, according to this calendar, is that there's no school already on April tenth. And so we're proposing moving the April eighth date to April ninth, so that there's an early release on April ninth, and it kind of ties it nicely for families so that we don't have a, kind of a one day in between the break there, and we can get that communicated out with our families as well. And this is for basically moving the PLC from April eighth to April ninth.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the calendar change. Second.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Anna. Move the April eighth, one P M early release to the ninth. Any other discussion?
That's a good catch. I like that.
All in favor of the move, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carry. Consideration to set the truth in taxation date as December sixteenth at six P M in the boardroom.
This is an annual date that we need to have a truth in taxation hearing meeting to set the levy for the following year. And we are recommending December sixteenth during a regular meeting at six P M.
Did we ever have, have to have it on a different date?
Used to.
Yes, used to.
Now, not so.
When there were windows where school had to have it, and this and this, and the conflict to have it.
You have a ten-minute meeting on those dates.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brenda, seconded by Bill to approve the December sixteenth at six P M truth in taxation. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the amended resolution calling special election to fill a board vacancy.
This is an amended resolution to what was originally passed for a special election this fall to fill a board seat. The change is that Welch Township is hosting their own special election at night, but the Welch resident townships that voted their regular polling place at Burnside School on five thousand one Learning Tree Lane in Red Wing, due to the special election to fill a vacancy for Beatty County Commissioner District One. And so they will not be coming to what we had originally set at the Cannon Falls City Hall meeting. So those residents will need to vote at their regular spot on Learning Lane.
So is this like a regular resolution? Do it.
We'll get a motion in a second and you can...
And then you do the roll call? Yeah. You read the, just read the old?
Yeah.
Okay.
So a motion to approve the amended resolution for the special election?
Motion group. A second.
Anna on the motion, Katie on the second. Okay. Read away.
Consideration to approve the amended resolution calling the special election to fill a board vacancy. Do you need me to read the whole thing? Is that okay? Okay. So let's just start with Anna. Yes. Bill?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Katie, yes.
Okay, that passes by a five-zero vote. Consideration to approve the nineteen-twenty Schoology contract.
So recommendation to approve our contract with Schoology for the nineteen-twenty school year, and I believe there is no price increase on that?
About thirteen-hundred-dollar decrease.
Thirteen-hundred-dollar decrease.
From prior year.
That's even better. I got mixed up with our next contract. That we have to approve. So thank you for that question, Bill.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Brenda on the motion to approve the Schoology contract?
A second.
Second by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the nineteen-twenty four re-tax contract.
This is the contract that has no increase over the last five years contract that we've signed.
My notes say it's a reduction of six thousand.
Six.
A reduction of six thousand.
Yeah. We tax once.
Yeah, we tax once.
Okay, my apologies, I'm all over your place here. This one has a reduction of six thousand.
I like your notes, you're a bomb.
Right. Well, I got too many, I gotta, I gotta get used to opening my different reports here to get down to what I'm supposed to read. I've got to print off my notes, those, that is where I'm probably failing at this at. So anyway, looking for an approval of the nineteen-twenty four re-tax.
That's a significant decrease. Just doesn't happen.
Five-year commitment on this instead of a two-year, five-year commitment on this instead of a two-year would be one of the reasons.
Oh.
Technology is more efficient than in the past. And then I think, depending on where E-rate falls in the future going forward with the Fed and how much E-rate is funding, a lot of this was offset by E-rate. So I think you're just trying to do it more comparative with the price, too.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Anna. Second.
A second.
Second by Katie. Further discussion? All in favor of the approval of the five-year re-tax contract, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of, from the general fund to the food service fund.
Yes, Josh had mentioned earlier that we may need to transfer funds from the general fund to the food service fund after the audit comes back. And this is just a resolution to authorize that transfer. And if it does need to be transferred, we would obviously bring that amount back to you. We need to have this in place at the time where is that transfer?
We just kind of made, we came into the fiscal year, fund balance in food service was twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So pretty thin anyway. As it sits right now with the audit, preliminary right now, we're at nine thousand in the hole. There may be some adjusting yet to do based on the allocations of utilities and salaries and whatnot. I wouldn't see it increasing from that amount, so just so we know, there will be a hit to the general fund if we needed to transfer, but it's not a large or huge significant movement. The concerning part to me is going forward, as we talk about whether we use food prices or lunch prices or those kind of things, to make sure that we're always keeping food service to the object. You know, it's just what I'm saying, that we're really not a router. We usually shouldn't run food service at a profit. We're not really in the business for doing that, but we should not be on a negative balance in food service. So the resolution just allows us, if we get to that point in the audit, we see that it gives us the authorization to make that transfer so we don't hold back the process of getting the audit due to approve the September board meeting.
Do you feel like the increase in the, in the prices for this year will help for next year to not be at the same?
It should help, you know. There are a couple of things that really affected us in fiscal year nineteen. I think we launched thirteen actual in-school days for weather. Every one of those days, kids aren't being...
Kids aren't being fed here.
Right. Now, we don't have as much expense for that, but you know, we're not getting reimbursed for those costs, too. So that's kind of a big hit on it. There are a few items, you know, just maintenance-wise that had to be taken care of. And that's one thing, too, as we discuss in going forward, finance means, you know, what kind of funds are we running on food services to maybe purchase things if we need to, or is that a facility thing should have been going out of general fund?
Sure.
Another thing we can discuss and talk on. That's why, as we look through wrapping up the audit, you know, are there things that can be adjusted? Should there, are there things that should have been facilitated that should be, can be moved around potentially? So I wouldn't see it going over this, approximately nine thousand dollars. But yeah, the increase in food service prices will help.
Okay.
So we need approval of the resolution?
Yes.
We need, hear a motion?
A second.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Brenda. Any other discussion?
Is there more of a resolution that I need? Is that, that's it right there? Okay, because I didn't find it in here. Is it on page?
It's kind of mixed up behind the...
Okay.
I couldn't find it.
It'd be easier to read than reading it up there for me. So Minnesota statute one-twenty-four D dot one-one-one subdivision three defines the criteria and process for Minnesota school districts to transfer funds from the general fund and food service fund. And whereas the school board of independent school district two-five-two has determined that a transfer of funds is necessary to eliminate the deficit in the food service fund, be it hereby resolved by the school board of independent school district two-five-two to transfer dollars from the general fund to the food service fund. So the motion. So we will take a roll. Let's start with you, Brenda.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie, yes.
Okay, that passes by a five-zero vote. Item eight, consideration to approve the nineteen-twenty employee resource guide.
This was a new requirement that came about because of a statute that was passed at the last national legislature called the Wage Theft Law. So we've had to update our hiring sheets and give new employees certain, I don't know if the right word is, certain reminders of what they are entitled to as employees, and we need to put this all into a nice little packet. And so we created this employee resource handbook, which will satisfy those requirements and basically be seen as an employee handbook moving forward. And so we're asking for your approval of this so that we can meet those state statutes. And we had this vetted through our lawyer, so it is, I'm just not...
And how about the union?
The union? We have not ran through the union, but the only issue is if the union disagrees with it, then we're disagreeing with the state statute. So it's basically informational for the employee.
There's nothing contract-wise in it.
No, again, if we're, if there is something in our contract that goes against the statute, then that probably should be identified anyway.
Looking for a motion to approve?
I'll move to it.
Motion by Bill, second?
A second.
Second by Katie. Any other discussion? Sorry, I'm just reading here.
Yeah, it's great.
All in favor of the nineteen-twenty employee resource handbook guide, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the nineteen-twenty mentor program.
For the nineteen-twenty teacher mentorship program, this agreement is the same as it has been in the past. As has the cost and, there's a description of the number of mentees and mentors and the rules of what the program does for each participant between the mentor and the mentee, and what their roles are.
I'd make a motion to approve.
That's a great program.
I would agree.
Second.
Motion by Brenda, seconded by Anna. Any other discussion?
I also think it's a great program.
It's of high value.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of the mentor program for nineteen twenty, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve the nineteen twenty restrictive procedures policy.
Uh, this is an update of the policy from last year, it needs to be approved. We meet again state guidelines for restrictive procedures. It goes through staff training that we have for requirements and activities. It goes through restricted procedures, seclusion of students, prohibited procedures, the holds, and all of the training involved with that and what we have our staffs do and the policies to follow in case we are put in those situations. So, any changes from last year that you're aware of? Other than what outline in there, I see the date has changed, and maybe Sharon can speak at that. There isn't any.
I don't think there are any.
I didn't see any strike throughs recently.
There are some strike throughs on the dates.
Yep.
But, um, other than that, no.
Katie, look for a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Katie, second?
Second.
Seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve a service to guide and develop Cannonball's area schools' strategic plan.
So, at the last board meeting, we had a discussion on updating of our strategic plan, and I was asked to bring back quotes to the board for consideration. And there are three different quotes, one from the Southeast Service Cooperative, one from MSBA, and one from Nexus Solutions. All three of them are attached in the packet. I have had experience with the Southeast Service Co-op of a previous district. They, they have three different options for dates and times. And then the prices listed down below. We do get a percentage break on that one due to being a membership of the co-op.
Fifteen percent.
Right. Which is a pretty good discount on that.
When we did our strategic plan originally, I wonder what kind of assistance, outside assistance we had, we needed, we used?
We don't remember outside of service.
We did not have.
In-house.
Is it necessary? Opinion?
I think it is very valuable, because it allows for a neutral party to come in and take a group of stakeholders and with their guidance, I guess, kind of put everything into a, a group and move the group forward and help facilitate a conversation. I think if you have myself do it, people may perceive it as, well, this is his idea and he's leading the group to this idea. If you have an outside person come in, it's more organic in nature, I guess, where it allows for more conversation with somebody else to facilitate that conversation and bring the group to a consensus in a direction.
I think we benefit from bringing in outside knowledge of the process, too. I mean, I do strategic planning as part of my job, but it doesn't necessarily translate here. But if we bring in somebody that has experience with creating strategic plans rather than us trying to.
For school specifically.
Exactly.
Right.
To try and start from scratch on our own. You might take up more time determining how we want the process to go than actually working on the plan itself.
Absolutely.
So...
I'm wondering what's the cost comparison, I guess someone's. Southeast Service Cooperative was the first one here that, um, that's four thousand seven hundred and eighty.
MSBA is seventy-three hundred, and that includes time, travel.
I'm trying to pull this one here. Yeah, seventy-three hundred.
Have you worked with any of these companies?
I have worked with, um, the Southeast Service Co-op and had a good experience with their facilities. She's very good at, um, bringing the different stakeholders together and allowing for input from all of the stakeholders and then bringing them to a consensus over a process. At first, kind of seemed a little slow, but it gradually builds up and allows for input into that process. The third plan from Nexus Solutions is a little bit different. It kind of ties in facility, long-term facility maintenance planning over the next ten years. And if we engage with them, they are willing to, um, put their strategic planning cost into their engagement of the long-term facility planning more of that proactive approach. Thought they had a, a good plan here as well, but it depends on if you want to do the, that extra engagement with them for the master facility planning. Or not.
You said facility planning, we just did some facility planning not long ago.
Tenure plan.
The, the tenure plan is the state's tenure plan. And a lot of that is currently, um, used up through, for the U.S. court project, like that, and so.
Are you giving any, um, any mild nod in a one direction?
Well, do you think the board can either sit on this for a month and really soak in what these documents are? Or we can bring back one or two of these proposal people to have them come talk to you individually to see what kind of feeling you get from them about their process at the September board meeting and make a decision there?
I think I like that idea. I would, I wouldn't mind hearing from, and just to, to explain a little bit about what the process is and how it looks before making a decision on how they do it.
I'm really open, I, uh, on it. You know, we used NMFCBA in our hiring process, they served us very well. We haven't used the Southeast Service Co-op much, and I've been to a couple of their seminars, they, they do a very nice job. And I would certainly like to see us use a, a concern that's dedicated to the, uh, this school districts in general.
Yeah.
So.
Nexus is, is a facility planning company. Not saying that they have a bad product, I guess I haven't used them as far as their strategic planning. Their outline of the plan looks good. I have used the Southeast Service Co-op, but they are obviously in the process of supporting schools, so. We could certainly bring one or two or all three of these companies in to chat about it. Or if you want to move forward with one company tonight, that's your pleasure, or none of them, if you want to go back to the drawing board, I can certainly try to look up some more.
My preference would be Southeast because of price and because of we're members, we have kind of discount, but it looks like a good plan, I think. Be nice to be, to engage more with them, I think. Versus CMSBA. I agree, because it looks very like, I like their outline.
It's very concise, and I felt like looking at the other two proposals, it looked more like, well, we're gonna do this, but we're also gonna try and sell you on these other things that we offer, which isn't what we're.
Looking for.
To accomplish, I, we want to do our strategic plan.
Right.
Not interested in doing all this extra stuff.
It really lays it out pretty specifically, too.
Well, one thing I noticed on the MSBA is it mentions a ten to twelve week period of time. I'm interested in needing that amount of time for this, this compared to the Southeast Services. Doing it in a few.
In three sessions.
One day-long session or?
Or, yeah. I think that's important.
No, it's a little more specific to just strategic planning, kind of what you're saying.
Sounds kind of like we're in, maybe in consensus. Okay.
I would make a motion for Southeast Service Cooperative.
And I would second.
Brenda, on the motion to hire Southeast Service Cooperative to assist us in our strategic planning, seconded by Katie?
Yep.
Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie.
One thing before we move on from that, there's a couple of different options on here. Would you like Amy to come to the September meeting to discuss some of the options?
That would be great.
Do you think that might be better to help get a consensus of?
Well, and then if we have any questions, we can ask her directly and she can just, you know, we, she can engage with us, we can make that decision right there.
Start October, November time.
Yeah, that sounds good.
All right, very good, we'll contact Amy. For that, thank you.
Consideration to approve the resolution for a bus lease.
Uh, Josh had mentioned that earlier that we do need to approve the, the bus lease resolution. It sounds like the district at some point did approve the bus purchases, but we need a separate resolution to approve the leases.
Where is that?
The next second page.
The second packet?
Yeah. The first.
First page of the second page, I believe.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, just real quick, two branded buses are actually at Telen Transportation right now. Uh, Telen's pretty anxious to get rid of a scooter starting up here. The total cost of lease, taxes, fees, a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars equates to about thirty-five thousand dollars a year for the payment on the leases at the end of the five years. We will own the buses just like all of our other leases are set up in the district. We just paid off two at the end of fiscal year nineteen. This keeps us status quo in terms of budget-wise with the prior year. And in total, we'll have six buses on lease during fiscal year twenty, assuming this will be approved tonight, so. And again, that'd be one of those things that we would have to discuss going forward, you know, what's gonna be the best way for the district to proceed if it's, now we're getting to a point where we've got a, a more up-to-date fleet, where we don't have buses that are twenty-five years old and constantly requiring work, you know. Do we look at this going along where we're leasing six now at about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year at leasing, we just purchased one each year. It'll take some time to get to that rotation, but right now the purchase price on them is between eighty-five and ninety thousand dollars, and it may be a way eventually of keeping up with the fleet then, maybe saving some funds as we get along the lines. Uh, future discussion on that, the matter in question would be the approval of the lease for the two buses.
And they're freight liners?
Thomas, I believe.
Freight liner.
I have seen them on our list in the past.
They're yellow when they carry you out of the.
Do you know what, uh, what pass size there?
Pretty seventy-two, I got the invoice for them.
Do you have freight liner passenger buses? And this is a twenty-five page document, so this is really interesting.
Freight liner.
And here's the total cost and interest rate.
Don't have the, uh, the basic buses, so they have to be a seventy-one or seventy-two passenger, they're not the flat nose eighty-one passenger, they're not ANGAT bus, which would be basic passenger, so, uh, assuming by the build sheet here, I won't let them see in the number of passengers, I would assume the seventy-one, seventy-two like our normal school buses. Uh, it has some of that ANDI and transportation, uh, the search of all these, because that's consistent with most of the fleet that we have, just as he has the mechanic contract too, just for ease of purchase of parts to.
Yep.
Do things. Although, you know, branded buses, probably not gonna, hopefully, you know, they're under warranty and we won't have a whole lot of work to do with them, but that just makes the fleet consistent.
I know that he always looks out for interest in maintenance, which is his big thing, so.
Yep.
It'd be for all of us. So, look for a consideration to approve the resolution if we need to resolve. Motion?
Someone.
Motion by Anna. Second?
One second.
Seconded by Katie. Okay, resolution time.
Whereas Lisi is, do I have to read this whole, for top part? Do you know? Oh, where do we start?
You started with the.
Whereas, yeah. Whereas, okay. Whereas Lisi is authorized by this, by state statutes to acquire two twenty-twenty freightliner two forty-one TS passenger bus by entering into a lease purchase agreement, and whereas pursuant to a resolution duly adopted by the Lisi on, on C-attached, the Lisi has determined that it is necessary to further the student transportation purposes of the Lisi that it require two twenty-twenty freightliner two hundred and forty-one TS passenger buses described herein as equipment, and whereas Lisor is willing to acquire the equipment and lease, to lease and sell it to Lisi pursuant to this lease. Jeez. Now there, now therefore in joint and mutual exercise of their powers and in consideration of the mutual covenants herein contained, the parties here to recite and agree as follows. So, that's the resolution, so let's do a roll call. Anna?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Katie, yes.
That passes by a five-zero vote. Consideration to approve the purchase of football and soccer scoreboards.
This item has kind of started prior to my time, but we need to probably go through a couple of motions here to approve the, the purchase of the football and soccer scoreboards, and then we'll need to approve some advertising to go on the soccer scoreboards, and as you know, the city, um, the football scoreboard is down at the city, and so the city, we're working with them currently on approving advertising on their end as well. But at this point, um, there's a document here that we put together that kind of tracks the, the expenditure and revenues for both the football and the soccer scoreboards that are committed. And so, with the size of the purchase, we need to make sure that we approve that formally and then also make sure in a second agenda item here to approve per our school policy, the advertising on school grounds for the soccer scoreboards as well. And Jake wants to add more to that at this point?
No, I know if you've been to a soccer game, but they don't even have a permanent scoreboard currently, they roll out a portable one with an extension cord that, actually over the weekend, we put a mouse nest in it and they chewed through a couple of wires and the timing didn't work on the scoreboard even, so. Luckily, I was able to get it fixed for the game on Saturday, but then the football scoreboard has all lived its life, and my rep here has said that they haven't made that scoreboard in a number of years, actually. And if you've driven by at night or been at a game, you see that numerous lights are out, you can't replace them, and some lights are just stuck on, so you can't even read what the, what it said up there, so. Um, again, been a long process, we started working on this last year, last fall, actually, and which included the sale of advertisements, which we kind of modeled this, this thing after a couple of other schools. Gerhew's done something very similar, as you can see, it's a very expensive undertaking. So, Gerhew, Stewartville, and North Branch are a couple of the schools that I have talked to and came up with this plan. We have done some advertising in the past. We have done some advertising in the past, but not to this scale. I think this is kinda why it popped up on everybody's radar, is something that needs to be board approved. So, a good learning process, because we're doing things not according to policy otherwise.
Well, having lunch recently, somebody stopped me and said, can't you just jilt those things so we can see them up on the concrete bleachers? A significant number of people sit up there, and your response was what?
And we're gonna reuse those I-beams at John Birch Park to save some money. So, he was looking, just angling it a little bit so you can see it up on the hill, where we do have lots of people sit up there. They do pay to get in there, but they like to stay up there where you can see kinda over the team and don't have to stand up. But those I-beams are in place, and obviously, we're not gonna move them, so. But the soccer, because, so soccer has got a more expensive installation, because they do need I-beams down there. And I'm ready to pay for that, and so.
Wanted to make sure I didn't get yelled at by that person for not bringing it up.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the football and soccer scoreboards.
Motion by Katie, second.
I'll second.
Second by Brenda. Any other discussion?
I guess I, no, you go ahead. Go ahead. Like I said, I didn't really understand, like, are these donations, or are these advertisers, or how's that work?
These are advertising spots that we would get in revenue if you approve the soccer ones, which we control here. And as we mentioned before, the city is controlling the advertising policy or ordinance, whatever you wanna call it.
So what happens if the city does not pass that?
Good question. I've been working with Dave Maroney, and Dave has started a process with the city along with the mayor to put them on a path to changing the ordinance in early October. Now, if the city, I guess the way I see it, the city, if they choose not to change the ordinance in the end, then we would have to make a decision on how we wanna pay for those scoreboards, or possibly send them back.
So if they, if they would change, do, do they have to have, can we have the one here in soccer on our facility, or without their approval, the city?
Yes, because the ordinance only deals with private property.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good question.
So it wouldn't, even if we had, we would just have to figure out how we're gonna pay for the football scoreboard then, if that would be the case, worst-case scenario.
Brenda, there were two donations, two just flat-out one-time donations on there, too. The Inver Energy and football boosters through the, well, it's from the fire department through the boosters to the school. The rest of them, the rest are I have.
Because I, yeah, I was wondering about that, too, because they were listed on our acceptance of donations, but if they're paying for advertising, it's not really a donation.
Right.
Yeah, so, so there are a couple that are on.
How does that configure? They just advertisers underneath the scoreboard?
Yeah, four spaces.
You wanna talk about that just for a brief second, in kinda the hopes moving forward about how we're gonna go about this?
Yeah, so what was pitched to these people was, there's four advertising spaces on both scoreboards, and we're working through five-year contracts, and after five years, they'd have the option to renew, or if they chose not to, we can resell it. We haven't set any fees or anything like that, but the football scoreboard is, as you can see, a little bit more expensive, just through the traffic and location and stuff like that. And then the soccer's a little bit less expensive for those people, so.
And what would be, being that the scoreboard is paid for, what would be the goal for after five years? Like, what would that money go for? Would it go towards those programs, or would it go?
Yeah, I've worked with Josh. We're gonna, the hope is that we'll put it towards other athletic projects.
Just like athletics, or like activities?
Our original proposal, we asked for two soccer scoreboards, one for the JV field as well, but it just got too expensive, so. We'll come up with a list of priorities, and the soccer, second soccer scoreboard is probably one of them. That's the idea, found the right paper, other athletic projects.
Good idea. One of the questions I've been asked is how the advertising, how advertisers were sought out for this project, because I think there's some people that would have liked the opportunity and didn't get it, I guess.
So, so this project, this thing started with kind of my idea, it's a big project. So, the football scoreboard, some of that started with just some conversations, like, hey, and we didn't wanna start this process and have it fall, you know, fail and look silly in the process. So, there were some conversations that were had, like, if we were gonna go about selling advertisements, would you be interested? And there's a very good response, and people said, yeah, absolutely, come to us, make sure you come to us. So, that's pretty much how the football scoreboard was sold. At that point, when we decided to move forward with it, we took, I asked the chamber to send it out, and actually, before the football scoreboard was completely sold out, I asked the chamber to sell it up, to send it out to her distribution list. I don't think it ever happened. So then about a week passed, and I found a whole distribution list that I was included on, and I sent out this plan to everybody in that chamber email list, and that's how the soccer scoreboard was sold. Yeah.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the purchase?
I had a question.
Yeah, shoot.
Jeff, you mentioned the possibility of, if the city doesn't go through with their ordinance change of returning, if we vote to purchase these, how is that, where are we gonna be at at that point?
I think we need to come back here, then. This is a plan that shows the offset of the revenue, obviously, from the advertising. And so, if the city doesn't pass the ordinance, and I think the board, we need to bring that football scoreboard back to the board here to have a decision on whether we send it back or fund it through the, our budget or general fund.
Because they're done, right? I mean, we're approving the purchase when
They're here.
They're already technically purchased, so this feels kind of backwards to me. I mean, I feel like this should have been done before we had the scoreboards, and we're talking about how to potentially send them back. So I guess, is there a policy in place for something like this? So that if it were to come, I mean, obviously, our existing scoreboards have been around for a long time, so chances that we'll have to deal with this again are minimal, but how are we gonna make sure that we're doing things in the right order going forward? Because this feels, we're approving a purchase after they've already been purchased, and I don't feel good about that.
I understand that.
Well, I think the viewpoint maybe is, because if I remember correctly, anything over ten thousand dollars has to be approved by the board. So, at the football level, it's obviously that's gonna be one. So, we're getting, I think the concept was it's being paid from outside sources, bringing that number down.
Right, and plus there's other booster donations, so, you know, is the, the purchase amount is above ten thousand dollars. And does the revenue bring that back down below ten thousand? But I think you can't look at it from that standpoint. You have to look at it from the first expenditure piece of it. And so, we're asking for approval tonight.
But I think that's, that explains why we're in this position.
Yeah, I understand, but.
It is a solid point.
It is, it is, it is a good point.
Well, and I think, before we do anything with advertising in the future, we need to like really cross-reference all of the ordinances and everything, because I think that it wouldn't have come to us probably if that had been done, maybe.
Well, we would have to work with the city on front.
Right.
And I think that was a piece that got missed, too. They should have been moved into the process.
I think it just didn't occur that it would be, that that's an ordinance, maybe. Like, that was just something that kinda was like, oops.
And knowing that the scoreboard down there does have some advertising on it, but it's old, so it's possible that the ordinances have changed in the intervening years.
Yep.
Maybe it should that at some point.
Yeah, so I think, I think it's, might just be a unique situation, too. I don't know.
It's unique, but it could happen again.
Yes.
Again, getting back to my original question, I think if we're gonna vote on this, in my opinion, we're really accepting the obligation. So, if the city does have the scoreboard, so, yes, we can come back, but I would imagine that there's gonna be a cost involved if we were to look at it.
And talking about Jake, there is a restocking fee, if you can imagine restocking a scoreboard on a shelf. And what percentage was that?
Twenty percent.
Twenty percent. So it'd be twenty percent of the price listed there.
Which is a lot.
Yeah.
And how much has been, how much is donations for the scoreboard and not, like, how much of the, so the football boosters was a donation?
Yep, and the Inver Energy one.
And the Inver Energy one.
So five hundred.
So five thousand of it was donated.
Were those specifically for the football, or were they specifically just for the scoreboard in general?
The four thousand was for football.
Yep.
The one thousand wasn't really specified, just towards the project.
Okay.
And here it says, donor request use of fund for football scoreboard, for the thousand dollars from Inver Energy. On the donation.
Sure.
Well, in essence, you're really then still looking at.
Sort of looking at like nine?
No, nineteen, twenty-one. If you get five thousand.
Oh, with the, yeah, with the.
Because that's really what the expenses, twenty-one.
Yeah, you're right. Because of installation.
But yet, if we're gonna return it, we're still, we're out the revenue, we're out two thousand plus dollars.
Right. You do look at the standpoint of cash flowing in until you get that.
Right, so.
Sure.
Other revenue, but it might take longer if you have the revenue from the football scoreboard.
Right.
Mr.? Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the purchase of football and soccer scoreboards. You see the donation list, the advertising list. All in favor of the approval of the purchase, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. You know, as we look back at this, you think that this ordinance has been in place for a long time for the city, I'm sure. And the reality of things, if it doesn't change the dynamic of the scoreboard or what's on underneath, that we're about the same height and everything like that, maybe we didn't follow the correct track. But with the advertisers and donators, I would hardly think the city would be able to
Turn that down.
Turn that down, knowing how many people have been resourced and involved with this.
And shown interest.
It could happen, but that's a lot of stress on city fathers to not change an ordinance.
Right, no, you're right.
But we'll see. Next one, consideration to approve the sale of advertisements on the football and soccer scoreboards.
Yeah, and really, this one was just for the soccer scoreboards. That follows along with our policy nine oh five on advertising in the district here. So we will need approval to put those soccer scoreboard advertisements up.
Seems solid. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion as amended to remove football from that.
Okay. Motion by Brenda, second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Second by Katie. Other discussion?
Where is our advertising policy currently? We followed the MSBA.
What do you mean, where is it at currently?
Well, I know when we put the Fieldhouse up, there was discussion between advertising within Fieldhouse. And so, I believe we're referencing that to that note. So, is that the next step that we're gonna end up reviewing?
Yeah, I mean.
Where, you know, so.
Opening a gate here.
Opening the gate, you know. I think it's a good revenue source, but I think we have to really understand what we're getting ourselves into.
Let's see what's left. You know, when we, when we have booster clubs, it's different but the same. We're telling the community we can't really afford to bankroll a football program or a wrestling program or anything else without outside assistance. I think this is one more step than that. Either we, I think we review the advertising policy, it's good to have done for months and a while, but we have to look to our community more and more to help us to achieve what kind of goals that we want to make. This is just one of them.
What do the advertisements look like on the scoreboard? Like, is it just the names of the company, or like, just their logo?
Their logo, yeah.
Just their logo? So it's nothing, it's not like a slogan or anything like that? Because I think that's a good reminder up there where it says, you know, the First Amendment rights and everything, like, just to remember that of what the, of what it could end up being, and if it's gonna be school-appropriate, or, you know, do you know, just keeping it, making sure that we are following that guideline?
Let's see if I can pull it up.
Oh, do you have a picture of it?
Yeah. It's currently in use, it says. Wow, try to make enough you can see it here. This is what, this is what the football ought to look like here.
Okay.
So it's a banner across the bottom?
Banner across the bottom, okay. Is the soccer the same, just a banner across the bottom?
Yeah, exactly.
And there's four spots on each one?
Yeah.
So there's not a specific policy that we have currently not having.
Advertising, no, it just says to carefully consider.
That's why I want clarification.
Yep.
So, we're just following this document provided by the MSBA.
Yeah, I think the school board could pick and choose when they wanna put their advertising.
Yeah, it says, it says here, the school board may approve advertising in school district facilities or on school district property.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't a separate policy that we, that we're using this one. And have been using this one for a number of years.
Yeah.
We don't deviate from policy. We do from time to time, you're right, you're right.
Better to know we haven't changed things. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the sale of advertisements on the scoreboard. Anything else?
I have one more thing.
Sure.
If this goes forward and we're doing in five years, and you're, would you just, would you bring back the new advertisers for approval, or how would that work?
Maybe that's something you guys wanna decide. I think we could either give them, write a first refusal, or maybe do a lottery and make it fair.
Well, sure.
There wasn't a ton of extra interest. There was a couple of people inquired about it that I heard of, and I said, sorry, it's full, but there was one that was pretty disappointed, and I know of, other one never heard.
You're telling me need a JV scoreboard if you wanna.
I have it. People say, hey, if you ever do a basketball scoreboard, I'd like to be on that. People have come to me on that already, but.
Okay.
All right, all in favor of the approval of the sale of advertisements, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the NSF grant.
This is the National Science Foundation grant that was applied for by Superintendent Geese prior to my arrival, and she was awarded that right near the end, prior to her leaving and me coming on. And so you'll see attachments here that has the project description, the budget justification for that project, and I am full in support of this project as Mr. Hodges is as well. And we will be working over the next year to put this programming into place for the following year. And so you'll see all of the different, as I mentioned, project description, and kinda the negotiated changes and responses to the National Science Foundation to this, and then the final budget near the bottom of item number fifteen. So looking forward for approval of this grant project. And then in the second item right below it, as part of this, I was asked to be an adjunct professor and to get paid for that position for about five thousand dollars as built into the budget. and to get paid for that, uh, position, uh, for about five thousand dollars as built into the budget and I told them, I said that my contract, uh, would not support that as I cannot be employed outside of the district without your permission and I'm assuming that if this is part of my regular work day, that would not be provided either, so I told them I need to be an adjunct, uh, volunteer professor. So we will be represented that way and that's kind of the second agenda in there as well, so.
Mr. Hodges, any input on this at all?
Um, this is a fantastic opportunity for Cannon Falls and for our students, so I'm in full support of it. Lot of, lot of pieces to put together as well.
There's a little bit of work ahead.
Yeah.
So is it any possibility that we would have outside involvement be interested in this program once it gets up?
That is kind of the goal of it, is for us to be a hub for Southeast State. So, um, uh, we might have students that would do the coursework, um, through Southeast State and Red Wing, but we have the facilities on site to be able to do the lab work and the actual manufacturing and the milling and things like that, so that, that's kind of a secondary goal of it, um, is to try to have them create these hubs out and about in the state for, for students to have the opportunity to experience this program.
I'll make a motion to approve the grant.
Second.
Motion by Katie who won that one?
Get to Bill.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Bill. Further discussion?
I'd also say thanks to everybody who worked on, applied for the grant and I'm sure there's, Laurie, for example, may have had something to do with it or the people in the room. Yeah, it's a great opportunity.
And thanks for all the work you're going to put into it and Beth as well.
Thanks in advance, um...
Yeah. I know it doesn't just come together.
Okay, all in favor of approval of the NSF grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Congratulations to us. Consideration to approve Jeff Sampson as a volunteer adjunct professor of Minnesota State College Systems as part of the grant.
As I mentioned before, um, I will need to act and, uh, act as a volunteer adjunct professor instead of keeping salary, so to have approval to be employed at, in another entity, so.
I'll make a motion to...
Motion by Katie.
Second.
Second by Anna. Other discussion?
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Number seventeen, consideration to approve the P S E O contract with Inver and Minnesota State College Southeast.
Uh, we have Minnesota State College Southeast contract, I haven't seen or heard anything from Inver Hills, I don't know if Tim can comment on that.
Uh, I, I'm in contact with, um, Inver Hills, there, there was a snag, there, I was supposed to have it by the end of the week, last week I still have a copy of it.
Good.
It'll look very similar to it.
Yeah, they're, they're all pretty much the same.
So we want to wait on that or do we want...
It, we have students beginning, it's all...
Yeah, so we should prove it, prove it.
Yeah, it's all part of the Minnesota State College system.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Brenda to approve.
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Any other discussion? All in favor of the P S E O contract with Inver and Minnesota State College Southeast, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, now for the extra additions on here. Personnel?
Uh, we have a resignation from Jill Schindel, Gil Corcoran.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Katie. Seconded by Bill, other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. U S Solar subscription agreement.
This is the informational, uh, item, if you wish to act on it tonight, you can certainly do that. This is for the third, we don't have the actual agreement here. Um, we can certainly postpone the approval or nonapproval of that till the September meeting, but you do have the information pieces to it. We can go about that either way.
I would make a motion to approve it, I think it sounds like a, a second, a win win.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Brenda, to approve the agreement. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Cannon Falls School District subscriber, Estoppel.
Uh, this is the Estoppel agreement for the second solar garden that you guys had approved last year and are looking for a signature from us for their, to complete their, must be their capital project for that.
Yeah, part of the, we, we, we're a tenant, is how they kind of described it and, uh, there's, we're recognizing that we know the deal is right on.
Okay.
Yeah.
As a third party.
Okay, look for a motion to approve. Bill? Kate?
Second.
Seconded by Anna, thank you. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the facility committee recommendation not to charge the senior citizen group or the CCC.
This comes out of the facility committee report, there's questions that, um, came about, uh, because of that facility committee report, so I'm looking for some direction or some clarification, I guess, on what you would like to do moving forward, you know, in March. Uh, there was action taken to charge, uh, the senior citizens at, uh, the CCC and please forgive me if I get some words around here, but that was the intent back then, two fifty a month, um, but there was some other communication, I believe in either May or June, upsetting the facility committee, I guess that's kind of where we need that clarification.
Yeah, in June, at our June meeting, it was just brought up that there was some language, there were some language changes that senior center had asked for, we approved those. Um, we had discussed whether or not we were going to make the rent payments retroactive to January. Um, we kind of decided not to do that and that rent is supposed to start on July first. And then that was just supposed to be executed, um, by the committee. At least that's my understanding of what we decided at that meeting.
Yeah, I agree. So I don't know what the discussion was with the facility meeting, to where they're recommending...
I think the facility committee and, and without Mr. Bill being here, um, I think centered around how did this get started? And where are we going with this and kind of went from there, I guess. Into...
You know, it, it did start that way, we met, we met as a group, I, I think we've already discussed that and there was, uh, townspeople there. The senior group was represented, um, mayor, uh, their administrative people, our administrative people. And, uh, we were shown their, uh, their financial statement at that time and handed out a financial statement. And I, I believe that at least, at least part of the group was kind of perplexed as where it, where it came from and all of a sudden where it came from. And, uh, you know, it did generate a lot of conversation, uh, quite frankly, they're, they're, uh, they run pretty, a pretty close margin. And, uh, even at two hundred and fifty dollars, it seemed like a stretch for them to achieve that. And, uh, the conversation became where did this come from and why all of a sudden? Because I, I think in early January, it wasn't a source of conversation for us and by March, it was a epic conversation. And on one hand, we're, um, we have bills close to twenty thousand dollars. Uh, but on the other hand, we've got somebody to occupy our facility and, and like we talked before, an occupied building is, is much better for us than an unoccupied building. We might as well tear it down then. So then there was subsequent conversation, it did come back to facility, uh, Mike was there and, uh, I can't comment because I wasn't there, but I do understand the, uh, the dynamic on a personal level that the senior citizens center is a leading commodity in our town. And, uh, one of the conversations from, uh, the, the city administrator was, well, we've got a, we could put them upstairs. We have a, a second floor upstairs, but it's more of a meeting room than anything else. It, it can't give them what we can give them. So I, I think our conversation and the, the, the recommendation by the facility was, um, in the scheme of things, this isn't going to break the school. It presents a great deal of goodwill for us. And at a time when we needed the votes for our facility, the seniors were right there with us. And, uh, having this conversation, will that impact us in the future on either bond issues or referendums? And I believe it will, but that's kind of the background as far as I can see it so far. They're asking for us to step away from that, which would require a motion for us to step away from that if we choose to do it.
The facilities committee is asking us to step away from that or the senior center is asking us to do it?
The facilities committee is recommending that we step away from it, correct?
Yeah, and I support that. For a lot of different reasons.
Were you at the meeting?
I was at the facilities committee meeting in August.
I don't know, I just feel like we've had so many conversations about this issue and we've gone back and forth and we've, we've made concessions and it's not, the building isn't going to be empty, it's not going to be completely unused if they were to go elsewhere, so the, the comment that should be just tear it down, I think that's taking it a step too far. I can understand wanting to provide goodwill, um, but I think in some instances, there have been situations where that goodwill has been taken advantage of at the CCC and, and things outside of what would be considered a reasonable agreement have been acted upon. And, and I guess if we don't, th- this is, up to this point, this has been, uh, basically a handshake agreement, there hasn't been anything in writing. If we're not going to charge rent, that's fine, but I think we need to have a clear scope of usage and access for the CCC. I just, I'm just disappointed because we had lots of conversations about this, I thought it was finalized and done and we were moving on and then...
And that was a compromise too.
It was, because it started out at five hundred.
Yes, we were at five hundred.
It's interesting when you, when you say that, and I agree with parts of it, how much conversation we had. We had none in November, we had none in December, all of a sudden it became an issue. And to this day, I can't figure out why.
Or where it came from.
Yeah, not that I wouldn't support it, but it just blasted on the scene all of a sudden.
Well, coming on board in January, I remember, um, Beth commenting to, this was one of the last open items that she had and that it was kind of a search and rescue sort of scenario, that she was looking for any budget items that were in a negative deficit. And that's what she came up with. That's how it started and that's what I remember. So all the conversations from there and that's where the twenty thousand dollars approximately expenses came into play and that's where the number came from. I'm not sure how, you know, and Jake, you worked on the, the, the dollar amount originally being a thousand, we were looking at a discount of five hundred, we folded at two fifty. In my opinion, at that time, I didn't think it made any sense because they, they were claiming they didn't have a budget to pay for it. But yet we were looking to put in place a contract, starting that they hadn't agreed to and we weren't going to get anything out of it anyway. So we were still, and we haven't received anything, so what we've created is not goodwill.
Ill will.
And so that's from what I'm hearing, maybe where the facilities committee has come back to. And that it makes more sense just to go back and maybe that's where you're saying the space began as A and is now A through D and we need to have a better understanding of that use.
And I know there were conversations about, there were initially, when this all started, there were initial agreements about, well, if we get to use this space, the district will get so many volunteer hours. And those volunteer hours have dwindled to a point where I don't, beyond book buddies, I don't know what volunteer input we get from the senior center, I'm not saying that that's necessary because then you run into the situation where other organizations are going to say, well, I want this and we'll, we'll donate this many volunteer hours if we can get this. I think we need to be careful about those kinds of agreements. I just, when I, when it, for me, when it comes to making decisions like this, when I vote, I, the, the first thing I'm thinking of is what's in the best interest of our students in this district. I understand that it's a great community outreach effort to support our seniors, but ultimately we have to do what's best for our students. And if we get to a point down the road where we're at a six thousand dollar shortfall for something that's going to benefit our kids because we're not charging rent on one of our other resources, that's a problem for me.
I think, I think more than benefiting our students, we look to see what benefits our district and that can be facilities as well as students as, as well as everything. So I, I'm full agreement with you that we have to have some kind of contractual agreement, what are the boundaries of them? I think that's, that's a given and you're absolutely right, I think it's been a handshake deal. I remember when it started, it was a, uh, it was the band room. And we had this little space just on the corner of the gym that we weren't using. Senior citizens said we could use that, our clubhouse, if you will. And Mr. Maguire said, we're not using it, you clean it up, you can use it. And the handshake agreement at the time was you can use it for as long as you need it. But little did we know that it would expand the size of it. And so I understand the need to charge people. I, I somewhat understand the, uh, concept of, hey, we told these people they could have it forever. But we didn't, we didn't a- a- agree that that space would get larger. So congratulations to them for their success and, uh, we should take that into consideration, but I would love to see a step back on this agreement, follow the direction of the facilities, but it's your call.
One thing I will say is that we did talk about setting those parameters with...
I thought I, yeah.
The, the committee as well and, and maybe that's something that we can bring back, uh, again, to the, make sure that the committee has those parameters in place as far as the, what rooms that they're using, because we did talk about whether it's the gymnasium, the hallway, the room X, Y, or Z as part of that, no matter what, if we were charging them or not.
Right. No, and I do think that that's important to just set a parameter of hours, maybe, like hours that are utilized and, um, like the hours and it, because, because then we could also use that space and be able to use it for something else in like the evening or, it can't be open and it has to, there has to be a, a set parameter, there has to be a somewhat of a contract.
I think to some extent there are because I know that that gym is used for youth sports.
Yep.
And there are other things happening there in the evening, so like I said, it's not, if they were to go elsewhere, the building is not going to be left empty. And we also have to think that if they were to leave, that gives us a potential opportunity to, to seek out another tenant that would pay. I, I, I mean, this is a, this is a resource that's putting us, like Bill said, in the red. I, I don't know, I don't know if it's, if that is a budget item that's worth it, um...
I personally feel like it's like, this community works really hard together and like, and it's always the you rub my back, I'll rub yours. And I just feel like this is a great opportunity for our seniors to have a, a gym to use, for one, there's no other space that they could do pickleball and stay active. Um, I just feel like they, they deserve that opportunity, um, but we saw their, we saw their margins, like Bob said, and they're very slim and they, um, so I guess maybe there would be a different way for us to, and I completely agree with you that, uh, the kids come first. But I think the kids benefit from having a community that surrounds them and supports them as well and if we can support back, it kind of creates a collaboration there. So I'm okay with, I'm okay with dropping the rent, I would like to see just some, um, something in writing to be signed by the senior center, so we are in complete agreement on the parameters that that building gets used.
Well, if anything, the whole topic has created a lot of discussion at our level, the senior center level and at the city. the Senior Center level, and at the city. The city was contributing, or is contributing, but there was no real understanding of what that was, what the dollar amount was, what it was supposed to be for.
What it was for, yes.
So maybe that's what we walk away with, is a better understanding on all parties' sake, and the support, and hopefully the Senior Center can increase our budget revenues.
I think it's lifelong learning, it's community education, but we were just, it wasn't like we really wanted to charge rent, we just were trying to recover.
We're trying to recover those.
There was a cost involved to the school to...
And we do provide them with discounts for using the auditorium for their annual fundraiser.
Yes.
And we don't do that for any other organizations.
Other groups are true, too.
So it's not just...
I think that's not just that.
Yeah.
You're right, it's kind of a no win here, isn't it?
It is, it is.
At the same time, it is a win if we can keep, if we can keep our seniors active. I'm entering into that already. So what would you like to do?
Pickleball.
Is this cause for a possible vote to rescind? Is it what?
You do have a motion from March, I don't know what the date is there.
March 11th.
11th.
I don't know if I can, it's in and out.
So...
Assist me here in what...
I think it would be good to do something to either change that motion from March 11th or rescind that motion, and do whatever your motion is, so that we have some tracking in the official minutes.
And I would suggest if somebody, if somebody makes a motion to rescind that, but also bring back some sort of an agreement that we can have them sign, please include that in the motion as well for clarification, what you've brought back, if anything.
Yes.
Just minutes.
So we don't even have a motion or an idea on the floor?
Not yet. I guess, in thinking of that comment, Jeff, would it be reasonable to say that that should be revisited every year, every two years, based upon their needs? And they, they are telling us what their needs are. And maybe their needs are growing, and that's something that they can come to a point that they're, I'm here to join them.
Sooner than later.
So then they, you know, the numbers grow, and their activities grow, and they have a need for more space. I'm not looking to limit them.
No.
But, so if it's A today, and they need A through D, we want to be able to work with them also, so in that agreement.
But also, then you could also be looking at how much it is costing, and where we're sitting.
Right, that's where the revisiting part of it is.
So the revisiting, you know what I mean? Like to be able to see if, if we're having to make, you know, substantial cuts somewhere or something like that, and we're having to weigh that out, you know, it is something that we're not stuck in forever.
If at some point in time they're endowed a half a million dollars, we'd like to revisit that.
That's why, it has possibilities. I mean, there's estate planning that goes on that leaves to the senior center. I mean, it could happen, so. So I would make the motion to rescind the March 11th, 2019 vote, charging 250 to the Cannavale Senior Center with that annual review.
We had already voted not to make it retroactive, though.
We didn't vote, we just discussed. That was, it was just a discussion, I don't, yeah, it wasn't a vote.
So Bill has made the motion to rescind 311 vote on the senior citizens being charged a stipend. And also in that was the annual review.
Based upon a space agreement.
Should we do that at like, like a year end? Fiscal year end?
Can bring it back in June? Did you?
Just because then you're, then you'll kind of be able to see, you'll be able to see where, when you can see what maybe, what the, what we spent.
Yeah, I'd like to see what the actual costs of maintaining that building are versus what we get in return.
Because we might have kind of jumped too far ahead with this thing, then, before we see.
There's a lot of information, and it was hard to know what was accurate, so I think...
Because it kept changing, yeah.
That needs to be.
Do you want to look at that in June?
I think that would give us enough time to have things gathered and be able to kind of hone in on what it looks like, what we're actually spending on, you know, electricity.
Rights are on all the time, so.
I wish we would have done that before this, yes. Back in January?
And again, that's that conversation that's just brought up.
It was just brought, yeah, it was just kind of thrown, thrown to us.
It would have saved us a lot of confusion and...
Confusion and, yeah.
So in general. Okay, we have a, we do have a motion on the floor, but not a second, to rescind the 311, 19 vote, requiring the senior citizens to pay a stipend.
A second.
And we've got Katie to second, and we will review this again in June. More information will be coming, and possibly even a, a meeting with the principals for that. I think that would be a good idea.
Do you guys want, have Jake just kind of draw up some guidelines in a facility use agreement that we normally use, and bring it back in September?
That would be good.
Jake and Dave both, it's a facility, right?
Dave, too, yeah.
Or whoever has that.
Facility disagreement.
A lot of it's in there.
Yeah, most of it's already put together.
Yep.
But at least putting some parameters around what they're using.
Around, yeah.
Good discussion, everyone. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? All in favor rescinding that 311 vote and everything that's behind it, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried, five zero. Good discussion. Okay, I think that brings us to pretty much the end. You can see what the other informational items are, and I'm sure we'll have more. Anything for the cause? Any members would like to chime in as we...
One thing that we'd like to do is recognize an employee that's been with us for 15 years and is resigning from as food service director, Wendy Robinson. And I don't think Wendy was going to come here, no matter how much we pulled her teeth or anything like that, but we do like to recognize her and thank her for her service to the district over the past 15 years. She's been a great asset to the district, and maybe somebody can probably speak more to that than I can, but she has fed her children and done it, earned good job.
In closing, she just loves to fly under the radar screen, and we've got facilities, and we've got all kinds of committees. I went to her one day and I said, how about if we'd have a food service committee? No, no, I want nothing to do with that. That means I have to attend a meeting and speak, I can't do that. So that's who she is. She just wants to do her job, and she's done a great job.
Thank you, Wendy.
Okay, anything you want to put on to the next agenda for school purposes? Please run it through Jeff or Laurie, and if we can get it on, we'll get it on. At this point in time, I'd look for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Move by Anna, seconded by Bill. Any other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are finished. Nice meeting, everyone.